Kewa Tato, welcome everyone. Do we have any apologies?
Chris Lans.
Sorry?
Chris Lans, if you would like to apologize.
Oh yeah, that was a standing one, I just wondered if we had any... But we haven't heard from him, that's what I'm asking. Right. Okay, councillors, we have reached the last item on the agenda, which is the wash-up, if you like, the completion of the annual plan deliberations and the final decision. And you'll have had a document page put round to you that, following the decisions of yesterday, we have arrived at a position where the rates increase would be 5.3% when we were aiming for one, sorry, for five, that would be ambitious. So, the basic decision today that we have to come to is where we're going to land in that regard. We have gone through all of the individual reports and funding requests etc. And after considerable deliberation, we've settled on certain ones, but that has taken us above what the self-imposed limit was. And bear in mind that the 5% is an average over the remaining nine years of the long-term plan. And the implication of going over five is that some other year has to come under five. That's basically what has to happen if we go, if subsequent councils to maintain the average of five. So, councillor Benson Pope, have you had your hand up?
For the sake of progress, Mr Chairman, I thought yesterday's discussions were largely productive and I don't think there was anything, while individuals will disagree about individual items, there was anything that was excessive. I think it's a good reflection of the challenges in front of us and I'll therefore move that we confirm the decisions made yesterday.
Okay, there's a second for that, second councillor Hawkins. Okay, I think we can treat that as a substantive motion and I will invite you to speak to it.
Well, I think I probably just did, but much in all is our... Sorry, I don't want to take up unnecessary time of the committee, but I think that the community will understand, especially the people who came to us with submissions requesting money, be it Broad Bay or the Marais signage or the museum funding and the rest of it, will understand only too well that we're trying to accommodate their wishes in a very public process. And I think it would only be the mean of spirit who would raise a fuss about us coming down with a decision that was 5.3 when we'd set ourselves the target of five anyway. Sure, it's not five, but it's not seven or nine either. And I think it's more productive to confirm the point we got to yesterday than to have an unpleasant fight about who's going to lose through 400 grand and where.
Okay. Further speakers? Councillor O'Malley?
I probably would have to say I almost completely disagree with that assumption because our role is to make sure we have a disciplined approach to spending. And just to simply basically have had 100% spend on everything that came past us and call that a good debate is not, in my opinion, a really appropriate approach. We can easily creep up in our spending and this is an annual plan, it's not the long-term plan. We've got to get disciplined ourselves in when we go into the funding cycles and how we do our funding. And frankly, this is our job this morning, is to get as close back to 5% as possible because frankly, we can just write other people's money's checks all the time and to call that mean spirited is getting very close again to inappropriate behaviour in this room. We need to be able to go through these numbers properly and if we don't change them, we don't change them. But I think to not even consider looking at them as inappropriate behaviour.
Further speakers? Councillor Alder?
I take it that last night there was lots of talking with council staff about whether you could pinch pennies here or there and sort of swap things around in timing or anything like that.
We did that before yesterday's meeting, which is how we had that $800,000.
Okay, cool.
That you're spending.
So, just to be clear, my understanding is that staff don't have a recommendation to take out to this.
Okay, there's no recommendation, okay. Thank you, I was just wanting to clarify that, that was all.
So, that was a question, did you wish to wait and speak to it later?
No, I just wanted to ask that question, just, you know, whether some magic money...
But what I'm asking is, do you wish to speak to this now?
Well, I'm inclined to agree with Jim in the sense that we're charged with that 5%, so I think it's worth having a debate, so I'll support Jim's motion if this one is...
Well, there isn't another one yet, anyway, you've spoken to this one, so that's fine.
Yeah, if he has a subsequent motion.
Councillor Wilson?
I can understand exactly where councillor Benson Pope's coming with this. We did have, I think we've had quite a few hours of debate already on these. But I'm also prepared to put up some other alternatives and I can only see probably $100,000 I could save there, but I'm happy to listen to other people's debate. So, I'm not adverse to having another round of debate either. But, from what my concern is, it's very easy to go in at 5 or 4.9 or whatever and think you're doing a really good thing by doing that, but I look at the things that were added yesterday and I'm really proud of all of them. I think that they are going to make some change and the changes that we have been asked to make through that submission process. If you go in at 1.49, it actually means the 5.1 or the averaging becomes harder and bigger hits later on. It is easier to do, front up, bigger, the way that... We keep on underspending, it actually makes the increases later on harder to do. The other part of it is, as we keep on being told, we're 11th lowest of rates in the city and yet we have, as was confirmed by the charcoal blue just on the arts side, one of the biggest range of facilities that we run of any metro. We should be really proud of it. If you go and look at the summary in that document about how they're impressed by the vibrancy and cosmopolitan nature of Dunedin, it's impressive. So, I'm not backing away from saying 5.3 is justifiable. On the other hand though, I am going to keep on begging on that the use of uniform annual charges and only putting that up by a percentage that doesn't keep up with other rates rises means that a disproportionate burden is going on to farmers and commercial buildings rather than the people who are often benefiting from the very good, community-focused projects we're funding. And that is an inequity that I'm actually more concerned about than the 5.3 rates rise itself. So, I'm ambivalent, I'm looking forward to hearing discussion on this. I'm not adverse to doing a 5.3% rates rise, but I'm happy to find some savings if others are.
Further speakers? Councillor Lord?
Sorry. Yeah, I thought, I perhaps don't know if Jim quite understood what councillor Benson Pope said, but I thought what he said was that we'd had the debate yesterday and rather than go back and rehash it all, it would seem almost pointless. And I think, I don't like rates rises any more than anyone else, but I understand that this 5.3 has come about not because we are being frivolous and I did cringe when I heard councillor refer to, we've got money to play with the other day. I don't think it's playing with money, but I think what we do have is we have responsibilities. And one of the things that people have told us over the years, I'm not particularly thinking of this year, but over the years, we've been told, we're not spending enough here, we're not spending enough there, we're not spending enough on this. And I think of some of our capex years when we've spent $40 million, $35 million, $45 million and we've got a capex problem. And I understand that the capex is not directly relative to the rates, but when we are wanting to put a programme in place, if you look at the figures, I just had them in front of me somewhere, like I said the other day, it's a total of $899 million over the next 10 years with rate spends like this year, we're going to spend $90 million, double last year, almost, $124 million, $128 million, $105 million, they're big numbers. And so, as a result of that, our operational expenditure does increase because we need to put staff in place, so our operating costs will go up because we need people to design what we're doing, we need to plan this work. And it's not all ad hoc work, it does require expertise and skills. And, you know, I'd like to say, well, I suppose the only thing, if I was being petty, I realise if we took out the $525,000 for climate change, we could probably get back to 4.9, but that argument was had yesterday, I came on the wrong side of it, I'm happy about that. This is a council decision to spend it and I don't really see a lot of point in rehashing that figure. Happy enough for 5.3.
Councillor Gary?
Thank you, Your Worship, I have a question.
Sure.
My question is, the 0.3%, what does that mean for the average rate, the average...
Mr Tunes, could you, would you be able to give us a steer on that?
So, what I want to know is what is this going to mean for our citizens because 0.3% is meaningless for most of the community.
Can you give us a minute to calculate that and continue with the debate, but we'll come back to you?
Okay, all right, I'll come back to you. Councillor Laufeyser?
Thank you, Your Worship, I have a question. Now, I've forgotten it. But in terms of our going to the community with the annual plan document...
Just, a order please, we can't hear the speaker when there's side conversations.
So, I'm just wondering what our obligations are or what order and response is going to be in terms of, we went to the community saying that we would keep rates at 5% and now we're considering 0.3%?
Sandy can respond to that?
So, through the chair, we considered this last night, once we'd done the numbers and realised we were at 5.3 if everything was included. We checked our consultation document and we did highlight that the rates were planned to be 5%. We had a range of submissions, it was one of the highest topics, were feedback on rates. But the financial strategy does say that it will be an average of 5% over years two to 10. Our view is that we consulted with the community, everything that has gone in is, or has been proposed to go in, is as a result of community feedback and that is the purpose of consultation. And so, we are comfortable that we have met our requirements under the Local Government Act for consultation.
Thank you, and you can reserve the right to speak subsequently if you wish. Further speakers while we're waiting for the answer?
The answer is it's about, look, very crudely, on the average domestic rate, it's about $7 a year.
Is that, that's right, Carolyn?
Yeah. So, that's very crudely and at the top end, it's more for some and less for others.
Thank you. Councillor Gary, would you like to speak?
So, I pay rates too, as we all do around this table and nobody likes a rate rise. And for those who are least well off, the increases in any costs are of concern. And it's a matter of trust here with the community too. However, having said that, we debated this very thoroughly and I just want to take issue with an opinion expressed that we were spending, that we're basically spending everything we're asked for, we're not. We debated this and come to a decision. And I just want to give an example of the kind of investment and delaying that investment, if you'll indulge me for a moment. Last night, as I drove home in the dark, I came across an accident on the section of Portobello Road that has not got the safety improvements done. And it was a very serious accident with a car on the rocks. Now, that section will be finished and we have made a commitment, subject to our final confirmation, to add that extra money in. But this project was supposed to be done a lot sooner. And so, if that road had been wider, the safer journeys philosophy is that if the road is more forgiving, then if you make a mistake on it, it shouldn't cost you a life or serious injury. And there was an example last night. So, I give that as an example of delaying investment. And we didn't agree to all the spend, so putting in perspective how much that is per year on the average rate, I consider the decisions we made over the last couple of days, which were thoroughly debated, as investment in the city. So, I'm comfortable to go with that. But also equally comfortable, as councillor Wilson indicated, to consider reducing any, if any, put up as possible reductions.
Councillor Vandervass?
This three times inflation rates rise has come about and keeps coming because we have long failed to fix holes in our rates-funded bucket. The staff cost hole keeps getting bigger. We have failed to admit and confront dysfunctional council companies no longer giving us dividends. And we have indulged the expensive, useless paperwork industries, the submissions to government industry, a fairly new and growing one, the climate change monitoring and posturing industry, the consultant industry, where we pay through the nose for consultants to take on our and our staff responsibilities. Sorry, did you have something to say, councillor Hawkins? The difficulty of facing these big issues, our companies, bureaucratic drivers, government demands, are great, but they've been great for a long time, they've been staring us in the face for a long time. And they are the main drivers of the continually increasing costs of running our organisation. And we need to look at these big driving issues, we need to recognise them for what they are, and we need to take strong action to stop those holes getting bigger. We need leadership to plug the holes. And if we do not, then all the virtue signalling about 5% not being a target, when obviously it always has been, certainly in the last 10 years I've been on council, whatever the percentage was, was always the target and we always arrived within point whatever of arriving at us. If we don't actually look at these bigger overarching issues, which all of our debate about a little bit of money here and a little bit of money there, actually are complete subsets of, then we will never be in a position to do anything substantial as a council. We will always be fighting for the few little percents around whatever the target is and we will always be slightly overshooting that target. I have consistently said that we should be looking at inflation as a rule unless there are exceptional circumstances and there haven't been any for some time. In the absence of people accepting inflation, we have a local government index, which is not much more, that we also should have taken real cognisance of. And I believe I'm the only one ever to bring it up here. Nobody seems to take note of that either. We are spending well beyond our means. And the ironic claim for sustainability, we are now liable for a collective debt heading rapidly to a billion dollars and claiming somehow to be running a sustainable council. Just a couple of points of a interest rate change could basically have this council being completely unworkable. Luckily, we've been saved by low interest and it looks like low interest is going to continue a while. That gives us a window of opportunity to actually do something. Instead of always assuming a whatever percent rise, we should be looking at aiming for a reduction in what we charge, not just for rates but for fees as well. You've heard this from me before, I won't bore you with repeating myself any further.
Thank you. Can I just ask a procedural question?
Sure.
Are we debating whether we look at scenario one and scenario two or are we actually debating to accept the rates rise?
We're debating whether to accept the rates rise.
Sorry, when I spoke to the wrong, because we don't, I didn't know that that was the motion.
Sorry, it was what was moved and what was moved...
That's all right, I can live with it.
Yeah, so, I think under the circumstances, I'm happy for you to...
Can I just have a chance to then modify what I was going to say?
Yep.
In turn, is there anybody else speaking?
Not that I have on the list, so...
Okay. So, my issue really is, I'm happy to go with this rates rise. I'm not against the idea that we have to spend what we have to spend. What I was saying is, I would have thought that it's judicious that when you have the stuff that comes to you that is not accompanied by a staff report, you make a list and then I would normally assume that what you would do is go back over that list one more time to make sure you were happy with those numbers. That was what I was making my comment on. Given that what I've heard everybody else say, the spending on infrastructure, the spending that is even on this list has to be done, I would have just liked the opportunity to go over it one more time, but I support 5.3 rates rise if that's what we're going for.
Yeah, and can I further clarify that should this resolution fail, then that's exactly what we will have to do. Further speakers, councillor Hawkins?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. I don't have much to say really, but just quickly in response to the comment that we've given up money for everything that has been asked for, and just a short list, we haven't increased funding for community grants or civic grants, we haven't increased budgets for playgrounds or boat sheds or symphony orchestras or tracks maintenance or any number of things, or community development or engagement with our Pacifica community, or any number of things that people both in writing and in person came here and asked us for. I don't think anything on the list of things that are before us to confirm are frivolous and certainly aren't, there's nothing on this list that does have broad support from our community. And what I found remarkable about the discussions that we've had over the past couple of days is how broadly aligned the membership of this council was with the values and strategic objectives that we're trying to deliver on, that we have agreed with our community over the past 10 years and are finally starting to make some progress on delivery against... And I take heart from, I take heart in that and I acknowledge councillor Lord's comments earlier, I don't think, given the overwhelming support all of these motions had when they were debated yesterday, where the value for our community would be and now getting in a room and tearing ourselves apart, trying to carve money out to get back to what was always the average rates increase as set up in our financial strategy. So, it's, I think we should take heart in the mandate that all of these things have and confirm them as has been set up here. Thank you.
Councillor Wiley?
Thank you, Your Worship, I will support 5.3%. Yes, I think everyone around the table would love to see it under the 5%, but I also appreciate that the good old days of finding pots of money or sharing pockets of money across the companies etc. into the council are long gone. And actually, this is a real evaluation of where we're at and I think that's a key point to note. The other part that I would really touch on is that the city growth is around 2% and it's growing, it's not decreasing, it's growing. And we see evidence of that every day. I can't see anything in this annual plan and this budget that actually does not invest in the city and invest in the community. I think there's every sector of the community benefits, I think there is a lot of really good investment. There's some parts that I could easily have said, look, we'll take a little bit off this or take that, but when we look at it, it is a true investment in the city and I think that's the way we have to look at it. And I think that's also the way that ratepayers have to look at it, we're investing in the total city. The other part is, the government is also investing in the city and there's going to be big benefits from that as well. So, and a lot of the work we're actually doing is trying to keep pace with what they're doing and I think that's really, really important. We could have actually funded a lot more, we heard some really good presentations and there was a lot of very good submissions made. And actually, I'd really like to thank the community because I thought out of all the annual plan process that I've been involved in, this one was actually a really good process. So, I really want to thank the community for actually engaging with us the way they did, but also for the staff and the way they've actually really presented this as well. So, I can fully support 5.3%. Yes, would have been nice to have been 4.9, but it is what it is and thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Laufeyser?
Thank you, Your Worship, I just want to again give thanks to Dr Bedros and her staff and for the blood, sweat and tears that they've put into this work. As I've sat here thinking, I've been reflecting on the long-term plan process, I think, what was it, last year? But I think I said, if it was up to me, in terms of the social wellbeing of the people in our city who have been doing it hard for generations, I mean, I would be prepared for a 10% rates increase. So, I'm very happy with this. I think that the community will understand that we have heard them. Last night, when I went home, I was thinking, oh, the Pacifica community, well, Elsie, you know, she just plucked a figure out of the air and said $500,000. And I went home thinking, well, community hasn't really got directly, you know, anything out of this, as councillor Hawkins said. But I was very happy with where we'd got to yesterday. So, I just want to acknowledge colleagues' hopefulness and graciousness with respect to this little getting over 5%. And I was just intrigued as I was listening when councillor Vandervass said yesterday about competitiveness being a feature of Western development, I was saying, well, there's not a lot of other negative features from my perspective that Western development is also responsible for and we're just simply fixing some of those.
Thank you. Further speakers? All right. I'd just like to look at this from two perspectives. The first is largely in response to the philosophy that councillor Vandervass espouses, our city is growing at more than the rate of inflation and I think this is what councillor Wiley was talking about. And I'm intrigued that, you know, we have the lowest metro rates in the country, there are no other metros that can keep their rates to the rate of inflation or even the rate of cost increase for local government and keep servicing the growth that's needing to happen in their communities. And it is an unfortunate feature of the way that local government is funded in this country that we are disincentivised from investing in growth because it is, all goes to either on to rates or to debt and there's natural resistance to that. And we have been conscious of affordability for some time. If we're going to, if you just took the quantum of assets that we are responsible for and took the depreciation on that, you'd probably have the rate of inflation before you even start doing anything else. But we're responsible to maintain and renew assets, we're responsible to invest in new infrastructure if we're going to allow for growth and development and we know that we're going to have to invest in adaptation to climate change, among other things. And that's just the core things, there's no way realistically that can be kept to the rate of inflation. So, that's the big picture. In this particular case, the way I look at it is, we put out to the community... In this particular case, the way I look at it is, we put out to the community and I have to commend staff on the consultation documents they've turned out over the last couple of years. They have been increasingly clear, not overcomplicated, really engaging with the community. And we put out quite clearly what we propose to spend and a substantial cohort or series of cohorts in the community come back and say, we like all that and we want you to do this as well please. And that's what we took note of yesterday. And we certainly, as councillor Hawkins says, didn't acquiesce in all of them by any means. There were a few others on the list, I was thinking, I'd really like to throw a couple of hundred in there or a bit more in there, but we didn't, we couldn't, we had to weigh it up. And, you know, it's only, in the last couple of years, we've even had the business community quite often saying publicly, or as I recounted yesterday in private, that you're not going to get development and you're not going to service the needs of the community unless you invest. And they were saying, you know, I recall last year, Chamber of Commerce and various business groups saying, spend more, it needs it. So I think we've arrived, but I do agree with councillor O'Malley's point that we should always be very conscious of the discipline of the limits that we set ourselves. That's a given. And throughout my time here, I have been very conscious of that. And I'm pleased to say that overwhelmingly we've managed to stick within the limits that we set. On this occasion, our community's come along, in my view, and said, we want you to spend some more please. And insofar as it's a minor amount, I'm prepared to listen to them and to go with this. Are there any further speakers before I come back to the mover? Councillor Alder.
Having listened to Mike Lord's rundown of the finances and other people's analysis, I'm prepared to go with 5.3. I see the investment particularly in sustainability and investment in South Dunedin and other areas as being really important. And I also see some of the work streams that are carrying on behind the scene to do with assessments with playgrounds and tracks and trails and things like that. Those things can, there's some things that are bubbling along in the background that we need to consider maybe in the next annual plan. But I'm quite happy to support this, I think Dunedin is growing. Today we had the announcement of the university getting gifted land by Porto Targo on the waterfront. And that's just a really exciting symbol or sign for us today that if we work together and we have a vision, that we can go a long way. And I think we will, so I can support this.
Thank you, further speakers councillor Benson Pope, you're right of reply.
Thank you your worship, I'd just like to thank colleagues for their support for the motion. And I think the key elements have already been reversed. I would have liked to give some money or some support to the Cabbage Man Community Group. The orchestra was a big request that we didn't accede to, didn't discuss actually. The amenity society have got some ideas they want to support for which we didn't support. The Mayfair is always asking for more support and we didn't give them any more. So it's just not accurate to suggest that we sort of roll over. I think both you and councillor Hawkins completely accurately characterised what the process is. We produce a document that has been truly much more accessible to the community and much better disseminated in recent times than it was previously. People respond and interestingly, in much lesser numbers to the process this year, which generally indicates not that they didn't know about it, but there's a greater degree of satisfaction with what's been presented. And then we look at the rats and mice if you like, some of them pretty large rats and mice, and allocate extra bits of funding. And that's why I think that was done sensibly and sensitively yesterday. There's hardly any point in re-litigating it and having a cattle market now about who loses what. So I think it's sensible to proceed at the 5.3 level, which is where we got to after the discussions yesterday.
Thank you, I'll take it by division please. Oh yes, the second part there really just flashes out the meaning of the first part.
Yeah, it's the legal requirement so that we can strike the rate. So you have to pass something like that second part.
The wording is different from what you moved, but the meaning is the same. Longer, okay.
Councillor Benson Pope? Councillor Alder? Councillor Gary?
Aye.
Councillor Hawke? Councillor Hawkins?
Aye.
Councillor Laufeyser?
Aye.
Councillor Lord?
Aye.
Councillor Vandervis?
No.
Councillor Newell?
Aye.
Councillor O'Malley?
Aye.
Councillor Steadman?
Aye.
Councillor Wiley?
Yes.
Councillor Woodson?
Aye.
Your worship?
Yes.
Division thirteen to one.
Thank you, it's carried. Can I take this opportunity, there's probably a couple more things we need to do, but take this opportunity not only to thank council for the consensual way that this, and councillor Hawkins referred to this earlier, despite the fact that there are clearly the odd division around the table, there's a sharing of values around this table that is expressed in the decisions that have been made over the last couple of days. And I commend that and I'm actually very grateful for it as mayor. The second thank you is to staff. They've done a fantastic job right through from the consultation process through to now and it's been clear and the process for us has been made as easy as it can be under these circumstances. And the third group that I would like to thank are the submitters. The submitters contributed an enormous amount to the decision making and the final outcome of this annual plan. And they don't get paid for it, they come here out of community spirit or reflecting what they're contributing already to the community and they ask for help or partnership or whatever. But they are a really important component in democratically arriving at the conclusions for an annual plan that we have. So I'd like to publicly thank the submitters for that. I'm not sure there's anything else, the only other thing I need to bring to your attention is following the debate yesterday on funding for climate change, councillor O'Malley suggested that it was of sufficient importance to warrant some governance input and oversight to that effort. And I agree, I think it is a hugely important issue and doesn't fit necessarily, it fits under, impacts on a number of the main committees, but not in any one of them. So I am proposing, in fact I'm going to set up a steering group which will have three councillors on it and councillor O'Malley, councillor Laufeysoe and councillor Newell, who I haven't had the chance to inform this yet. Had you been here. I was about to say that. So in terms of reference will be set up for that and that will be a steering group. It won't be a committee, but it'll be a steering group and they will have that governance oversight of what is arguably, and certainly this is what the community are telling us, the most important thing we are confronting at the moment. So councillor Hawkins?
Sorry, I don't mean to discuss necessarily the detail of it, but just given the month we're in and the ongoing nature of this work, will the terms of reference be written up around the positions that are held by those elected members as opposed to them personally?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
We may no longer be the deputy chair of anything soon.
Yes, but we had a discussion yesterday and it would be quite useful for the steering group to meet a couple of times prior to the election. So normally at this point in the cycle, you'd leave it till next term, but actually we need to start framing up the work. So yes, it will be framed up in terms of the deputy chairs of the three major committees.
Okay, now I see there's another. Right, so there's two essentially. Could you roll it back to the first one? So we note the feedback from the, so that's noting the submissions effectively. Yes, and now if you could roll it back up to the second one. B, approved staff comments for feedback.
So if any of you have got specific items that you want to come and talk to us, don't do it here, come and have a conversation in the next few days. Yeah, it has, it has, but I know one or two of you said, oh, I'd quite like. So without changing the intent, you can't be saying, yes, we'll give you money if that hasn't been decided or so on. But if you've got tweaks or thoughts of things that could potentially be included, they'll all be with you. But come and see us in the next few days and we'll have that discussion.
There was one like Broadway which was specifically asked that staff work with them and so.
So those ones will be made automatically by the resolutions?
That was part of the other reason.
So I will move this from the chair. And I don't think I really need to explain or expect a great deal. It's a requirement, so seeing as councillor Hawkins, this is a requirement that we have to, that gives the staff the mandate to send out the comments that they do. So are there any discussions on it? I'll put it all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. That councillors, is the conclusion of the meeting. Thank you all, it's nice to be finished at quarter to ten in the morning. You can all go to the pub, there you go. There is morning tea.